Good morning. Good morning to everybody who came out this morning. We appreciate it. And we're going to get started of the work session for February work session. So if you go ahead.
We're going to have to do an ad first. It is much regret that I have to announce that Leah will be leaving us. She's going to be relocating closer to family in Kansas City. She claims it has nothing to do with my bad jokes, but she's leaving. I'm not convinced on that. But very sorry to hear that she'll be parting us. She's very afraid of going to P O A. We are interviewing for her replacement. But in the meantime, what we would like the board to do is normally we do not take votes at the work session, but unfortunately Leah cannot be at the next week's work session. So what we would do, what we'd like to do is have the board take a vote to name Roxy Gomes as the Assistant Corporate Secretary so that she can attend next week's meeting and take the minutes for that meeting. And hopefully within a reasonable amount of time you'll have a replacement. Well, we'll never be able to replace Leah, but we'll have someone to go back to the position.
Probably one of the prerequisites is slap at your children. Maybe it hard to find somebody. Okay, can I have a motion that we?
So vote.
Okay. All supporting? Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it.
And as I indicated, the board rarely likes to take votes at the work session, but unfortunately, since Leah cannot be at next week's meeting, it would be inappropriate to take the vote at next week's meeting and she's taking minutes. It just would not make sense. So move forward. Appreciate that. The next section, a lot of these, the Rules and Regulations Committee has been busy at work over the last few months. So you'll see Modified Policy 1.10. This is regarding the Board Director's Ethics. And this is the second meeting. It's already been gone through one reading at last month's meeting. There have been no additional changes to that policy. So assuming that there's no further discussion on this one, we'll bring forward next week.
Any discussion on that one? Okay, that will be brought forward on Thursday.
The next one is New Policy 1.10. 1.12, which is the disciplinary procedures for directors. Once again, this is a second reading. We had the last, we had the first reading last month. There have been no additional changes to this. And if there's no issues at hand, we will bring it forward for a second reading at next one, at next week's meeting.
Any discussion on that one? No changes? We had two of them brought forward.
I'm going to skip a little bit and then come back. Have us go down to Roman numeral five, which is Policy 6.02. You recall at last month's regular meeting, the board voted and went through a first reading on that. Following that meeting, there was further discussion regarding the language that we had put together. And if you look on...
Page nine.
Page nine, you'll see that, if you look at the bottom of page nine, you'll see that we refashioned that based upon the input that we have received. This was further discussed at the Rules and Regulations Committee, which was held on Monday. And while the overall concept is the same, it's a significant change that would require a whole new first reading. So this is the recommendation of the Rules and Regulations Committee that we hit the reset button on 6.02 and then re-initiate it and have a new first reading on that. Do you want to make a comment on that, on the chairman?
Anybody that was not at Rules and Rights, does he have a question or concern?
I think it looks good.
And it goes back to first reading. And it also takes two. Back to first reading.
If we were making a grammatical change, a spelling change, you could, you could make an argument that it does not have to go back to a first reading. But even though it's relatively similar, it's different enough that it does require a whole new first reading.
Any other comments?
Just the second sentence. Is that all? Second sentence there, "Directors shall not use media or social media to reveal information or express their opinions on matters before the board," blah, blah, blah. I think it's worded properly. It's just that if I'm not in a social media situation, I can't express my opinion to anybody in the world. Is that correct? And without defining social media.
Yeah, that's true. But in this context, it's talking about matters before the board that have not been made up yet. So in that case, no, you wouldn't be able to discuss that.
But the other issue is covered in another policy. So I know you cannot express your displeasure.
Okay. One thing that I think is important to note here is a large portion of why this has come to be is that there is a definition between private and public social media. I think it's under the impression of some that if they're in a private group on Facebook, that in some ways is private, but that is public still. So I know there's some weird semantics behind this. It's hard to like define that. But that's, that's been some of the nature of the need for this. So for everybody who's applying to be a director on the board, we may go ahead and try to figure out how to provide some examples of what that looks like so people know. I think the words are great. We may need a visual aid, especially for onboarding new board members. Territory to their confidence because they're going to decide on this correctly.
My comment would be that anything on social media, to me, is public. It's public whether it's your account that you've given access to others to, or it's a group account, it's public. I don't know what a better way of saying that.
My hang-up here is not mentioned to, not noticed in the public. That's everything. If it's not put out in the public, you don't talk about it anywhere. And so it goes to social media as long as private conversations. So I think it's a combination. And I think people need to keep that in mind, that private is private as far as board business that's not brought to public contention or not brought into public. Yes, no concerns?
Me?
Yeah.
What you said, private is private. Is that what it says? I mean, it looks like we're just picking on Facebook.
Don't forget that we have a confidentiality policy that is separate from this. So if you were to view both of the policies, then I think that would cover everything that we're talking about. We don't need to restate the confidentiality policy in the P O A Publications Policy. Don't need to restate it.
I just think the method of communication has changed so drastically in the last three, four, five years that it needs to be mentioned separately. Any others? And this will become a first reading on Thursday of next week. Okay?
Next up, we're going to backtrack to Roman numeral four, which is a new policy, I'm sorry, a new modification that the board is looking at, 1.03.2, and it's in, on page six of your board packet. And these are modifications, guidelines for the functioning of the Elections Committee. And you'll see they're relatively modest changes. On the bottom of page six, you'll see that, so last month in January, the names of the candidates were revealed. And then the Elections Committee has to come back in February and then do the ballot as to how everybody's name is going to appear on the ballot or have to do the draw to see how it can appear on the ballot. This just allows the Elections Committee to do both at the same time so they don't have to come back, make it easier on them. Also, on page seven, we're not changing the ruling, because actually this ruling goes back to the governing, goes back to the Declaration and to some previous lawsuits that are fairly, fairly old, several decades old. But what we've tried to do is we've tried to use more common English, easier English to understand. And that's what Doug has done, is try to clean it up. Maybe you can make a couple of comments on that.
Yeah, there is some confusion about, and Terry brought this up, that there's confusion about the one lot, one vote issue. And it wasn't really clear in the Declaration or, and that's why there was a lawsuit, because it's not really clear. But the case was, Tom, it's like 15 or 20 years old, that reaffirmed the idea that every lot has one vote. So whether it's owned by husband or wife or not, you get one vote for that lot. So we tried to, tried to make that a little more clear in this, in this policy.
I'm probably going to love you to water, Mr. Kim. Sorry to do that. If a couple has more than one lot, they are on the same ballot. If the title of each lot is the same, they're on the same ballot and indicates they have two, three, four votes. If they choose to not like that and want to vote separately, they need to change the title and reverse it on one or two of the other lots so the other person can vote. So there is a way to do that if you feel strongly about that. We're not taking that away in any manner. It's just that if they're listed the same way on the title, they will come out as the same on your ballot.
Yeah, and it's likewise, if you have, if you own five lots, but you've only paid up on three of them, if you're only a member in good standing, quote unquote, with regard to three of them, then that ballot will be weighted for three votes, not five.
Yes. Doug, how, when the ballots go out, the person to whom the ballot is addressed, is it addressed to both of the, particularly in the case of couples, both of the owners of property are to the first listed?
It's typically the, how they're entered as members in our system according to how they're appeared on the deed. And Roxy can actually probably correct me if I'm wrong on this, but she does a lot of these. But the member is entered the way that it appears on the deed. So if it's husband first, husband will be listed first.
But the ballot, that's what I was addressed to, the deed holders?
Correct. So they're, they're listed on, you know, if it's husband and wife, they'll both be listed there. And we've had complaints that, you know, from a husband who says, "My wife got the ballot first and she voted in, sent it off already," and you have it vice versa. And the court case even mentioned that briefly and said that people who own a lot have to decide amongst themselves how that is going to be, whatever issue is going to be voted.
Right. So how is that monitored in the case of Lebron?
How is one monitored?
How okay about if a person chooses to vote Lebron? Is the, how is that ballot distributed? How does a person access that ballot so that you can go say it's...
So when you, when you sign up, you're going to, and you provide us with an email address, it's going to go to that email address, it's going to have a specific pass code that's assigned to that email address and you're going to go in. Now, if you and your wife share that email address, that's once again between the two of you and your own household to decide. But it's, it's specific to that email address and the specific pass code that you receive.
Okay. And so the membership ought to be cautioned that when they specify an email address to which board or P O A Communications know, that they are also making a selection as to get on a kind of ballots. And therefore, it would be that member, unless that email address, the joint email address will lead to the specific individual that is listed on the membership.
Right. And I want to kind of put things in perspective. We send out 30-some thousand ballots every year, and we field this question twice a year. So it's an issue.
This is three times.
Yeah, it's an issue, but it's not a huge issue. And some of that is just going back to, you know, how it's listed on the deed is how it's, how the ballot is listed, who receives it. And we've had some people challenge us on that. Hey, you can change the deed. You can have the husband listed first, the wife listed first. It doesn't matter to us. It's totally fine.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one.
Go ahead.
Doug, where is member in good standing?
It's defined in the policies. There is.
About this policy?
Yeah, it's just defined for all, for all the policies.
Okay.
So it's like a glossary. It's like a glossary at the front of the policies. And we, we'll enter that, our large change here, so it's actually 1.00, and it's called Definitions. And so you can look it up there. And corresponds with the definitions that are nearby ones too.
Yes, Mary.
If people can vote in person at the annual meeting, probably those votes are not drawn into the total that was provided at the beginning of the meeting.
Great question. So what happens is we have an Elections Committee person there. The cutoff for walking in is one half hour prior to the meeting. So if you get there, get to the meeting, one half hour early, we will take, the Elections Committee person takes that ballot, they scan it, they send it to the inspectors of election, they manually enter it into the system, and that gets included in the vote.
Does it say anywhere that they have up until half an hour to go?
Yeah, it's on the documentation that you receive, on the ballot that you receive. It says that the, how you can bring it in and what the deadline is. Last year, we had one person walk it in, and it was counted. The reason why we do a half an hour cutoff is because several years ago, we did the cutoff at the time of the beginning of the meeting, and then we had to scan and send it over and then re-tabulate to include those. And we ended up starting the meeting 15 minutes late because we were doing all this necessary work. So now we have the cutoff 30 minutes beforehand, which gives us ample time to make sure that that ballot gets counted.
Other questions?
I'm curious, do we have any way of identifying within the city ballot list or criminal, criminal actions on behalf of members who own property? Are we even allowed to filter for that, if you will?
There's no way to, the government documents do not provide any provision in any way regarding, the only provision is, are they a member in good standing? That's the, that's the only threshold.
Well, you know, to be on the board, you've got to, you've got to have, quote, high moral In my view of criminal activity, that's not a high moral standard by anybody. If it were, if it were known to us, do we prevent that individual from casting a ballot?
No, if they are a member in good standing, they have paid their assessments, their ballot is valid.
Okay. And if, now if they would break a P O A rule and be suspended, then they would be not a member in good standing.
That's correct. It would come before the board and there would be, you know, there's a due process there for that member, but they, the board would suspend the membership.
Well, I find that disturbing, but enough said.
Any other questions? And that also goes back to the first reading of next Thursday.
Correct. And do remember, these documents were written over a few years ago, the Declaration, and they're not perfect. And I think it's challenging to have wished that the lawyers could have had a crystal ball and looked a few years into the future, but they didn't. So there's, Declaration has, has a lot of imperfections and it's what we've got to deal with. Moving on, the next one that was discussed by the Rules and Regulations Committee was Modifications to Policy 7.04, which is the investment policy. If you go to page 11 of your board packet, you'll see that one of the key words here is, if you go to Roman numeral two, section three, previously it stated the board will retain an outside investment manager. And now it states the board may elect to. And if you move to the next two pages, on page 12 and 13, what effectively we've done is now that our, our cash position is a lot less than it was several years ago before we started making improvements to our infrastructure, several years ago when we had, you know, 10-plus million dollars in investments, it made complete sense to have an investment company handle this. Now we're a lot lower and we are having Dwayne do those investing and purchasing CDs and so forth. So this allows Dwayne to do that. And also what it does is if you see under the investment portfolios on page 12, you'll see A and B, we're going to specifically define the type of risk and the type of accounts that they can use. I personally am of, have always been of the opinion that our investments for the association should always be conservative. No property owner is going to come up to you and pat the board on the back and go, "Great job on taking a little bit extra risk on your investment and making additional money." We'll never do that. But they will come beat, beat down the door of the boardroom if you lose a dime of principal. So we should always take a very conservative approach. How you invest personally is a different thing. I personally am a little more aggressive in my investing. That's me personally. For the association, it should be very conservative. And then when you move on to page 13, you'll, you'll see how on section F, in the event that the board does elect to employ investment manager, if it does not, oh, I'm sorry, if the board, in the event the board does not elect to employ investment manager, the chief executive officer shall be responsible for investing associations from funds in accordance with this policy. And specifically, it will be limited to A and B, which are the most conservative. What we don't want to have happen is we don't want a general manager or chief operating officer to say, "Hey, my brother's got a great investment. We're going to go put a bunch of money in." No. We're going to make sure that the investment is very conservative because we don't, we want to prevent loss. And there have been examples, I've read articles in association publications where associations have not followed this, invested in very risky investments and paid the price.
We have an understanding with our financial institutions that as long as it relates to CDs, T-bills, or money market accounts, that we're not paying any compensation.
Correct.
Or advice there. I mean, I know when we were heavily invested, that we paid there.
Well, those ones, we never paid. Yeah, we never paid commission on CDs.
Understood.
And with Dwayne doing it now, we're not paying him.
There's no mission.
Okay.
Other questions?
Do we shop our checking account? Because some personal checking accounts here earn interest on them and some you can't.
Yes, we have, and we'll do that again as well.
Since Dwayne does have a microphone in the front, yes, we do shop those. And we also use money markets.
Yes.
Which we earn a bit of interest out of. Not a huge amount, but it's something. So we try and use those funds as wisely as possible, but we don't, definitely don't want to get overly risky. So if the board is in agreement, this change will go forth to the board for the first reading next Monday.
Any other questions on that one? If not, we'll move on.
The next item is the Community Input Meeting on page 14 of your board packet. You'll see that we're going to hold a Community Input Meeting on March 12 at 6:30 at Cooper Elementary School at number two Blowing Springs Road in Bela Vista. Chris, our intrepid IT guy, will be setting it up so we can livestream. So if you're unable to attend, if you're out of town, or you just want to sit on your couch and do it, you can do so. The topic of this meeting will be discussing a connector path which would lead from Metfield Park all the way down to Blowing Springs, which would ultimately connect with the Razorback Greenway. It's a 2.2-mile stretch approximately. It would be a 10-foot wide strip, concrete strip, and it would be funded through a grant. At this meeting, we're going to have representatives of P O A, the city of Bela Vista, and if we do a Trail Blazers. And we're asking that the board and Recreation Committee attend so they can help us moderate the meeting. So, and this information has already been put out on the e-newsletter. It went out last week and it'll go out every week until the time of the meeting.
Did it perhaps go out to the school newsletter they send home, a newsletter or information for the kids every week?
That's a great question, and we'll look into it.
Tom, the way in which the meeting is going to be conducted, I wholeheartedly support. One of the things that I'm concerned about though is that if we're going to break up into small groups for discussions, that, that's part of the...
Well, I mean, right now is preliminary. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with all the people that are going to be doing the presenting. And we're going to, we're, so we're getting together to strategize on how we make the presentation and who covers what section and so forth. But yeah, our, our thought process is breaking into smaller groups so that each of those groups can discuss the issue at hand.
Okay. One of the things that, if those people are, people are watching it in live stream, okay, have we, have we looked into a mechanism, live streaming, that inputs perhaps, you know, setting up a, I don't know, a chat room, so to speak, where, where people who are not attending physically the meeting can make inputs, or perhaps even those people that are, that are attending on their PCs would be streamed into one of the groups that is discussing the things so that they, they are actively involved. so that they are actively involved, it's not something that they're, you know, passively watching, but can make some inputs.
All I'll do is I'll talk to the IT guys and see what they can make out.
I would personally recommend not to do that. If they're not attending and they're not in small groups, then they can forward their questions and comments after what they watched on the stream. But I mean, if they're not there to participate, then I don't think they should get deference to me. And how would you answer those questions at this meeting in small groups?
I'm, you know, I'm completely, saying that there may be some people who can't make the meeting.
Well, Pat, courtesy of the livestream allows for a chat during it, of which the moderator can then take screenshots and log those questions or concerns.
Right. And I know, I didn't mean that they should engage in the conversation.
But we can look into it and we can bring it back to the board and see what their opinion is. I'm a little bit neutral on this, although I do kind of lean towards more input is good.
Any other questions or comments?
The next item is an update regarding the stump dumps and the stump dumps and the fire. So a couple of things. Leah printed out a press release that was released on 2/19 by ADQ, and those are available. She made about 50 copies, which should be sufficient. And you can get that, if you want to reprint it again, it's on the city's website. Once again, we encourage everybody to go to the city's website to look at all the posts that they have done. They stay fairly up to date. And also, ADQ has a site where they're including posts. But the notice that came out on 2/19 talks about how the governor expects a decision in the next few days regarding remediation, or hopefully they'll get that done within a few days. They're working on the most comprehensive solution for this community, using a quote from ADQ. And also, ADQ is working with the UK on funding. So hopefully we'll get some additional information fairly soon. On a slightly different matter, we received the third round of testing from a testing company regarding the lakes at Lake Anne and Lake Brittany. Those came out fine. I've sent those test results to Cassie, the city, to post to the website. They haven't gone up yet. I think she's at a conference. So hopefully that will get posted in the next few days. But both of those lakes continue to be fine. We will continue to test throughout the duration of this situation to ensure that the lakes are not impacted. The plans for the three dump sites that are located inside of the city of Bela Vista, those plans were submitted several weeks ago. I included that update at the last board meeting. At this time, we're waiting for a response from ADQ. We've been told that we're still within the normal timeframe of when he should expect to receive a response. We'd love a response as soon as possible, but we understand that they have to do their work. So we will have to be patient. Regarding the stump dump at Highlands, that should be the plans on how to remediate that site. Should be submitted within about 10 days. We're doing a survey at this time, which is required as part of the plans. So that should be completed fairly soon, and that will then allow us to submit those plans to ADQ. And then the last item, and I covered this at the community input meeting that was held at Riordan Hall on the 12th. But the POA has also hired ERM, and their goal is to work with ADQ and NSAFE to offer advice and input and possible more cost-effective ways of remediating the site. We just felt that bringing them on may be of good assistance to NSAFE and ADQ. And that's my update.
You attended the meeting on the 12th, and there seemed to be some confusion going into that meeting, whether it was going to be held or whether it was not going to be held. I believe the mayor said that that evening had been canceled. And I was wondering, because there was such, I didn't go to the meeting, and could you, I was wondering if you could give a brief summary of what led on at that meeting?
So there was a little bit of confusion as to whether different parties were going to attend. And I don't want to speak for the mayor or ADQ or the health department as to why they weren't there. That's their job. I was invited, and I felt it was important to attend. We had four board members there, four, five? Five board members there. And I think that was really good that the board was able to see and hear some of the concerns from the community. So there was, Kevin Dooley is here, and Kevin recorded that. And I think you could even watch the entire session if you'd like, which would be really helpful. Kevin, maybe you can help them out on how they can get that information. Maybe after the meeting you can tell them. But I think that it would be very helpful for you to watch the entire thing. There were a lot of questions. Now, I had to be, I was very honest and said that since we have a lawsuit against the POA, I have to be very careful in how I answer every question. And I think most people were respectful of that. And so many of the questions that I answered, and Steve Work was there also, and Chris Nelson, a community member that is being impacted by the fire, also joined up on the panel table. And between the three of us, we did our best in answering some of the questions. But many of the questions that I answered, I received the information from the city's website. So I once again encourage people to go to the city's website because there's a lot of good information on there. And because of so many questions being about items that were covered on the website, it kind of led me to believe that maybe you aren't utilizing that resource and they aren't going to that. So I encourage you to look at the video. It was a good meeting and I'm glad I was able to attend.
Was it well attended?
Fifty, 75, 75? Kevin, I'm looking at you, ish?
Seventy-five.
Something like that. So fairly well attended. I mean, you know, for budget meetings, I think our last budget meeting in November had 10 people in attendance, so 75 is pretty good. I don't know how many people, are you able to track how many people viewed the video?
A few thousand at this point, I believe.
Okay, all right, so that's good.
Thank you. Tom, I've got one thing that I think would be widespread to ADQ and the city in regards of missing information and the kind of blanket comment, "Go to the website." Go to the website. I feel like we need a secondary newsletter that's set up or a way that people can be notified that updates are posted there. It seems a little hollow to me to just be like, "Well, go check the website. When is it updated? When is, I mean, there's a major missing gap there." And I don't think it's very hard in the modern day age to set up some sort of email blast to ADQ of the city so that updates are posted, that those who want to follow the status of the updates are notified electronically on their email addresses that they submit. I feel like that's not really appropriate, but a necessary measure to keep people informed versus putting it on them all the time.
I think that's good input because when I checked the site on the 19th, I didn't see the press release. So they probably posted it just after. One of those, you know, one of the classic, you check and then they post it right afterwards. And so I didn't get it for 24-plus hours. And it was someone who mentioned it to me, and that's how, I was like, "Oh." And so I went back and checked, and there it was. So if I had received, so I'll speak with the mayor and Cassie about that. I think that's a valid idea. What we don't want to do is, one of the things that we want to try and avoid is, early on, we were talking about having information on our website. But I think having information on the city's website and then our website, I think it can get confusing. The city's been really good about, so I'll send Cassie the test results for the lakes, and she'll post them for me to the city's website. So we're trying to funnel everybody to one location. So I don't know if that email information should come from the city. Probably from the city because they're coordinating all the information. And what I don't want to do is, I don't want to try and fill one gap and then create another gap in communication.
Sure.
So let me talk to them about that idea.
Other questions or comments regarding the fire? If not, let's move into open forum. Any property owner has a question or concern, please state your name and your location. Nobody will, okay.
Yeah, Steve Cade.
I need you to come to the mic, Steve, because we're recording.
Good morning. Steve Cade, I had a couple of questions. It might be premature when it might be answered anyway, by that community instantly. Is it going to require some sort of new agreement?
Yeah, it would probably require an addendum or a brand-new licensing agreement.
Well, we haven't worked that out yet, basically.
It would be premature at this time to have the document.
Do we have the update on sort of determinus, what's going to happen with the endpoints of the trail?
We'll see you on March 12th, and you'll get all that information.
Okay. And let's see here, on the vote that we were talking about, the half hour, is that the end of the voting period, or is that, that's the end of it?
So the meeting, the annual meeting starts at 6 o'clock. And so the last walk-in vote must be received by 5:30.
What I was wondering is, when, if the board decides to vote the lots, the inventory, when are those?
The board has passed a resolution last year that they would not vote the lots in any instance regarding, well, first of all, it's been for years that they've said, they passed a measure several years ago, John, keep me straight on when we did this, but they never vote regarding an election.
Per candidate.
Per candidates.
That predates maybe on the board.
If you're talking about an assessment vote, well, we're not even, we don't have an assessment at hand. But if we did, the board passed a resolution last year stating that they would not vote on an assessment. So in other words, they're not voting at any time for any reason the lots that the POA owns.
Okay. I was sort of under the impression that was a one-time decision, but what you're saying, that's forever.
Lessons change. I can't speak for future boards. I can only speak for this board that has made this commitment.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
I have a question, a couple of questions.
Have we ever voted for at an election?
No, no, those were voted in an election for board members.
My name's Kevin Dooley at 122 Leister Drive. I had the same thought that Stephen had. My understanding, in reviewing the video from the meeting from last fall, my understanding was that the board said you would not vote the lots on the first vote, but then if the assessment didn't pass, then you would have another vote a short time later, and you kept the option open to go ahead and vote the lots at that time. Am I mistaken, am I?
Okay, so let's first talk about the election that we're having at hand, which is for the board directors.
Okay, we're not talking, so Stephen wasn't talking about it.
For that one, the board has made the decision years ago that they would never vote on that. For, you know, at this point, the board has not announced an assessment vote. So we're really, this is a moot conversation.
I understand. I was talking about something totally different.
With that being said, there is a delicate balance between, you can't make future decisions for a future board. So you've got to be careful in that, you know, if you make a resolution, how far does that carry forward? I'm not trying to get, I'm not trying to get shifty on you.
I know, but at the last fall meeting at Riordan Hall, Mary brought up a very good point, that every decision the board makes affects future boards. So I'm not...
That would be a precedence of that present board that would be brought onto the new one if they choose to follow through. But it does not dictate that they need to vote that way?
Okay, these are actually the questions I wanted to ask.
Okay.
So at a city council meeting earlier this week, they were, you're talking about a grant for the proposed two-and-a-half-mile paved bike trail. I assume that grant is going to be coming from the Waltons, is that correct? That's what I heard at the city council meeting.
We would receive a grant.
Okay, so that's not going to be disclosed right now. I heard something else at the city council meeting, that the board is also talking to the Waltons about building more dirt bike trails over by Blowing Springs. Is that true?
I'm not aware of additional trails over at Blowing Springs.
Okay. Were you there?
Slaughter Ben.
I'm sorry.
Slaughter Ben.
Slaughter Ben, but they're new to us. Yes, I have heard that they're doing more trails over at Slaughter Ben. That's in the city of Bend, Bend.
Okay. Well, the city council was talking about this, and they were talking about Blowing Springs.
So we are in agreement for the extension of soft-surface trails at 11 Under, which is a central portion of Bela Vista.
I've heard those.
We're also talking about on March 12th, the extension of a connector path.
I've heard that.
And I don't know anything else about anything else.
Okay, well, the city council was speaking out of turn. That video is, I also recorded that meeting. Anybody who wants to watch that, it's free to do so. I'm not making this up.
You can bring me a Bible, I will put my hand on it, and I'll say I have no knowledge of any other trail conversations.
Fair enough, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
My name is John Pricey, and I have a question on the definitions. This is with regard to the members in good standing. I guess what I'm questioning is whether or not it's a plural definition with an S behind member in the definition?
It says member in good standing.
Member. Yeah. Okay, I am on page 27 of that section 1.03.2, which is on page number 7. I guess on the second line of number 10, at the very end, is that a...
Hold on, what number?
Page 7.
Page 7, number 10.
Number 10, the second line, the word members at the end of the second sentence, is that a strike-through S?
Yes, it's a strike-through. It's kind of hard to see, but yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because the four sentences down at the very end, I didn't know whether it was supposed to be a plural members or singular member, I think. Because you define... I think because you define in the third sentence, you still will have to say members in good standing.
Yeah, I think that's meant to mean the 34,000 or whatever members, total members that are in good standing.
Okay.
But member in good standing has to have a plural, if you see.
Okay, but that is a member in good standing is the definition.
Yeah.
Not in members.
That's probably, that's a good point, yeah.
I just want to make sure of that, because it does change this paragraph depending upon that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Maybe you can, for members in good standing, would they be members in small members?
Yeah.
To separate the member in good standing definition.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Then you have a lot of higher, A.
Say A, member in good standing.
That does not change the context of, changing...
Neither for you. Now, how would that...
Anything else? If not...
You're going to announce meetings.
Yes, go ahead.
It's a preview to next week's meeting. I'm hopeful that we'll get a preliminary financial through year 2018 next week.
Yes, we will.
And possibly an update on the transfer of leases of the cell towers from one body to another.
We'll give you that data on both of those.
Anything else? If not, next Thursday, the 28th, at 6:30 in the boardroom, the regular board meeting. Community input meeting regarding the trail from Metfield to Cooper Community is on the 12th of March at 6:30 at Cooper Elementary School. The GM meeting will be at 2:30 on Thursday, March 14th. Excuse me. This is a closed meeting, the work session, the 21st at 9:00. However, the board meeting, the regular board of directors meeting on March 28th will change to 6:00. 6:00 from now on. There seems to be a better attendance at 6 than there is at 6:30, and that gets you home earlier for those of you who have small children, et cetera, that want to go home and get them to bed, et cetera. So that will be a permanent change in the month of March, not next week. Next week is till 6:30, and in the month of March, it moves till 6:00. Anything else for the veteran of the class? If not, we'll adjourn.